You come to the microphone and the podium and speak at the podium. This will facilitate the people being able to hear at home and it will also help Keisha when she does some transcription. So your assistance in that will be much appreciated. Uh, first item on the agenda tonight deals with the Public Safety Building Committee Mission Statement. Chief Buxton, Chief Young, uh, and we will have, uh, I'll go through it briefly what the mission statement is. Mission statement, Town of Newfields Public Safety Building Committee. The mission of the Public Safety Building Committee is to thoroughly review and reevaluate all possible solutions for addressing the facility needs of the fire and police departments, including the feasibility of a combined public safety building versus separate facilities. The committee will make recommendations to the select board based on operational needs and public input. To establish the committee, the committee shall consist of the fire chief, the police chief, the police lieutenant, who will be the secretary, and five at-large representatives of the community, each with professional backgrounds and qualifications consistent with those needed for design and construction of municipal public safety building. Responsibilities. The committee is charged with the following tasks. One, public communication and engagement. The meeting schedule will be posted at town hall and website. B, engage the public through townwide email thread and open meetings. Two, current facilities. Review concurrent facilities. Review primex audit. C, review and understand want, needs of all departments. Three, site identification and evaluation. Identify possible suitable sites, either town or privately owned. E, develop a concise list of viable sites for further study and recommendations. Recommendations. Deliver an interim report to the select board on feasibility of moving to the next step. Five, project management. Review recommendations and potential costs to implement. B, manage project timeline, expenses, and coordinate with contractors. C, ensure compliance with all legal and safety standards. D, report regularly to the select board. That is the mission statement that has been drafted and put forth by the above named police chief, fire chief, and the people that are on the board. Uh, Chief Young, would you like to pick it up from here?
Yeah, so after last meeting where the select board, the formation of the safety committee, uh, request was put in to have a mission statement which was worked on and folks that was worked on, uh, with Fire Chief Buxton and I. Uh, but also during that time, we worked with John Hayden, who was there at last meeting pertaining to, um, him being involved with the committee and we met the board together, which I did evening folks, but I will get announced to the public tonight. That the board with the five at-large representatives is also John Hayden, uh, Tom Grotter, who was here tonight, who has experience in this in the past, that worked with Chief Reed several years ago. Uh, Bill Merser, who I may know as a town, Brad Junestine, the road agent, and Jack Steiner. So those will be the five at-large community members that will be on the board along with uh, the secretary as well as the fire chief and myself.
Chief Buxton, anything to add?
I'm here.
Say anything from the audience? In that case, anything to you, Cat? Art? I'll make a motion that we, uh, find the, uh, mission statement, uh, suitable and that, uh, we accept it.
Second?
Ball in favor?
Aye.
All right, that'll free zip, that'll pass. And, uh, John's not here tonight, John, I understand will be the chair.
That will be discussed during the first meeting.
Okay. All right, so, uh, I want to emphasize the part about regularly reporting to the select board and keeping this appraised. I think it's important that, uh, the select board gives you wide latitude to research this and report on it without any micromanaging coming from the select board so that you can, uh, perform the responsibilities in the most fluid and, uh, efficient way. Anything else from anybody else on that before we move on to the next item? Seeing that it's a negative, I have something here from the fire chief. This is a, uh, for sale by steel bid, one nineteen eighty-seven international fire truck as being offered as is, it's going to be bid sealed and they will be delivered. The bid period will close on December first at three o'clock. And then they'll be opened, uh, when we get a timed, a date, time group to determine it. What do you think on that, Jeff? Anything in particular?
Just something in the way your, your second meeting was the, or your, your first.
Keisha, we don't have the fun date.
You're not sure of certain dates.
Okay, so how about if we put it down for the, uh, first select board meeting in December, is that could not probably be the ninth? We'll, we'll, we'll settle that later in the meeting tonight, but, uh, does that work for you? Okay. And so that's basically the bids and then there's a bid form. All right, anything else on it, Jeff, you want to throw up?
I came with a dog getting posted and
Cat?
Yep.
Mark?
I'm on.
All right, so we're good with it, folks. You've got ball, you can run with it. Well, the next item on the bid on the agenda is the library budget that I don't see anybody from the library. So moving right along. Oh, uh, library board of trustees on their budget. Okay. So we'll move right along with that. Uh, next item coming up is executive official reports, uh, three November, yesterday, conservation commission meeting.
Okay. Uh, Concom meeting yesterday, we had, uh, a review of the current bylaws and some discussion focused on, uh, proposed updates related to alternates, uh, how they're selected, the number, and the process and timing when these alternates are asked to chime in. Uh, reviewed, uh, easement reports, uh, commission reviewed, uh, the submitted easements and all reports were accepted as presented. And the upcoming vote for the Vernon Anderson, uh, easement will be November seventeenth, yeah.
Anything else?
That is it.
All right, uh.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, ma'am.
Did, did you want to discuss the CSX information that you emailed out or is that for another meeting?
Yeah, well, that's, that's another element. Uh, I wanted, uh, to review that letter. I had, uh, I had the Concom, uh, chime in and it's really very refreshing to have some smart people, uh, in that.
He's the new member.
They're, they, you know, they, they put some, uh, good, they put some good feedback into it and, uh, basically we're just putting an email together that, uh, will give us the best possible choice, a chance of getting a, uh, a good reception. So I have a couple of contacts that we can send to, uh, CSX. And so I'll review that with the both of you, uh, at a later date if you like. Did you happen to review the email?
I have a, I have a question for you. Did you discuss this at last night's Concom meeting?
Yes.
Did you have a vote on it last night?
Yes.
You did?
Uh, yes, yes.
What is the tallying on the vote and is it in the minutes?
We, we had a, we had a collective discussion that they were going to, uh, they said, yes, we'd like to send that out.
Was there a motion made and the vote taken?
Not a motion, no.
And that I moved that we're not accepted until the Concom does a vote?
We don't have to, we don't have to send the email. If we're going to make it this difficult, we just don't have to send the email.
It isn't a matter of being difficult, it's a matter of following protocol and procedures.
Protocol and procedure, I get it.
Would you like me to comment on that?
Yes, ma'am.
Allison wants conservation commission. I guess I would have no idea that we would need to vote on that, so my understanding was that that was, that's a letter from the select board. So I guess I'm not sure, and I will say that I wasn't involved in earlier discussions, so I may have just missed something. I, I would not have thought that that was a Concom vote. Would have thought that that was Concom input into a select board letter. That's what I thought we were doing.
That's correct.
Well, that, that's your interpretation, Mark. I disagree with that. I think we've had an issue in town on numerous boards where we haven't worked to find a steady and, uh, consistent protocol. And I think when the Concom is referencing to us, they want us to engage. I would like to see a record of the vote and I would like to see it forwarded to the board so that there's consistency going through. It's just like last week when I was talking to the fire chief, emergency management, and the police chief in regards to their support for the Public Safety Commission, that I wanted it on record, they were behind that. And I think it's appropriate that the Concom be on record in a protocol established so that there is not an issue on this. And this is something I don't think it has to be, the time is not of the essence on this matter. So I, I, it's my position that you guys should take a vote on it and then forward it to us after that. It originally started out, Allison, I don't think you were engaged in it, when Mark just said he was, he wanted us to draft the letters to select board and it was a consensus of both Cat and myself that no, that was a responsibility of the conservation commission to do the research presented to the select board. And if we're going to move forward on that, I would like to have the full support documented of the conservation commission. I just want to tighten up the protocol.
Yeah, and we can do that. I guess that wasn't clear, so we may want to think about, I mean, there are times when we have information from the select board that we're just discussing and times when, times when we have information that we're just supposed to discuss and times when we have information where we need decision. So we would need to know, is this a discussion item? Or is this an item where you want a vote or?
Totally understand.
Need that information.
This isn't even made clear, uh, among us, that it had to be voted on from the conservation commission. So, you know, obviously if that was something that needed to be done, I would have asked and said, I'm going to ask for your vote. But we had a collaboration and had, uh, a discussion on how the email was going to go out.
Yeah, I was definitely
Want to have it, John?
There is, we now have detailed notes, um, so it is definitely discussed and recorded in the minutes that that discussion happened and that the Concom is supportive. If you feel like you need to vote as well, we can do that, but that is recorded in the minutes. Well, I haven't seen the minutes, but I assume.
I think the analogy is when we have discussions on issues here, I'll make a motion to accept it even for what may be seen, not as serious or major issues, but minor issues. That way we've established a record of, that can be back going back and seeing what the positions were, who took what positions and why. I think it's a matter of transparency and having just laying a foundation in our protocol to tighten up, uh, not only the select board, the Concom, planning board, and so forth.
Easy enough to
Time is not of the essence on this. I think it's just a matter of heading it to your next meeting and then it comes back, we're good to go. It's a protocol.
Can I ask that clarifying question?
Yes, ma'am.
Is the conservation commission allowed to send an exploratory letter on their own with the support of the select board? Or is the expectation that the conservation commission is making a recommendation, hey, look at this property, we have information, this could be available to us? And we have agreed unanimously, it's worth looking into, and then we draft the letter?
Well, it was agreed by the board when we started discussing this, that the Concom would do the legwork once it was put together and they had agreed on it. And then they would bring it to the select board and the letter would go out under select board letterhead.
Want to make sure.
Obviously agreeing that we
Same page.
I've seen it go both ways. It sort of depends on which board initiates the idea and, and sometimes it's just a question of which board has the best contact. Right? So you guys are a little more official, so if we're dealing with more official agency, it might be better coming from you. When we're dealing with homeowners, you know, sometimes it's better coming from us, so.
Totally understandable. I, can you appreciate the point I'm making of trying to tighten up so that things are done consistently through all the boards and that there's a good clean going back?
We can do that.
Thank you, ma'am.
While I'm up, do you want me just to give you a little more update on the Concom meeting?
Yes, ma'am.
And a couple, there were, there were a couple of things that you have asked for. So one was, we talked a little bit about a protocol for appointing new members, um, and we did a little back and forth on that and it looks good to me. We reviewed that, um, Concom agrees that that looks appropriate. We also talked a little bit about who we would like to nominate as a, um, as, as the next member. We're full as a board, but we have some room, um, potentially for, I can't remember what they're called, the extra members.
Uh, alternates.
Alternates, thank you. Um, but we realized that in our bylaws, we don't say anything about alternates. And we felt that we were uneasy bringing in alternates when we're not, we don't exactly say, we don't say how many alternates, we don't say if they're voting members. So our bylaws can be modified in December. So what we decided to do was do a modification of the bylaws in December where we worked through exactly, like you asked me how many alternates and I said, one, I don't know. So we'd like to do that right. So we want to do that in December, really lay out how many, how many alternates. Um, and in that document, we can also put in this protocol for how members are nominated and then brought forward to you.
Sure.
And the other place, question that's come is the role of the select, um, the select board's representative to the conservation commission. And again, we don't have anywhere where we formally say what that person does. And when we look around other boards, a lot of boards do. So they say specifically what, what that rights and duties are, so we'd like to put that in as well.
Okay, so just, uh, as a edification, the planning board specifically allows for the select board representative to participate and vote. The founding documents for the conservation commission do not have the select board member voting. He can be heard, but, or she can be heard, but they are not a voting member. That's the way it stands now.
Goes all the way back up to state RSAs. The state RSAs say that the land use boards, which is a planning board, that representative is a voting member, but they are silent on the subject of conservation commissions.
And so I think that provides, I mean, so it's dictated by the RSA there, but when the documents were drafted under the conservation commission, the RSA at the time did not even address it, as you're saying. So I think that what was done is at the time of the formation of the conservation commission, it just rolled with what the established protocol was. And that has been the standard for the conservation commission now.
But this is our opportunity for doing the bylaws anyways to put it in.
It's something that you, you're
You don't have to look it up again next
To address. Okay.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Next item on the agenda. All right, so is the Hampshire Department of Revenue Administration correspondence on warrant articles five and 10. This has turned into quite a goat rope.
Point important.
So what's confusing about this is last year, these warrant articles had to be submitted to the DRA for approval prior to appearing on the ballot. The DRA approved the warrant articles as they were drafted. They approved the, uh, vote and the setup on that. And now they're coming back and saying, well, pay no attention to the man behind the curtain because what we told you back in December of last year and in March is not really accurate and it's not true. Back and forth to council, I'll let you take it from here, but council said, uh, we've got some work to do to figure out how to avoid any jeopardy.
So the, the primary issue is the way that it's worded on the ballot isn't clear to the DRA that voters knew exactly what was being set up. Now, we can argue that they do, uh, but very clearly voting to have a charitable trust set up, one with moving town money into that fund and one with accepting donations into a separate fund for the same purpose. So each warrant article five and 10 being voted on, uh, yes by the body equals four accounts. Town money into one account, donation money into one account, one topic. Town money, one account, second topic, donated money on the second topic. Four accounts, money not to be commingled, no other tax money, no other general fund money mixes in. Uh, everything goes where it should. And we have an understanding of that and it's been handled appropriately. Uh, the problem is they, uh, the advice we're getting from legal counsel is that in order to clean it up so it's more clearly in alignment with what the state would have us do, they would have us redraft the same two warrant articles, handle it again out of deliberative session, put it on the ballot again, explaining, you all already approved this, this is what you wanted to do. This is just a clarity of language. And essentially put it back out next spring. And their advice includes not even cutting a check from any of the money that's been donated, uh, until we clear things up. Or at least we give our plan back to the state to say, here's what we're going to do. We're going to make a whole new warrant articles for next March. And once they okay that, then I think we won't, uh, have any trouble being able to touch donated funds. But as of right now, they're saying, don't even spend on the donated funds.
One, one thing I just wanted to clarify on that, Cat, is these were funds that came from non-designated funds, from money that is built up in our rainy day funds, so, and actually not technically donated. It is tax money that is accrued and the town is sitting on and uses, uh, for rainy day issues and, uh, unknown events such as funding these guys. But other than that, it, it's a mess.
So we've handled the funds correctly. And in order to be in alignment with what the state would have us do, uh, it's looking like that our attorney is telling us we have to write it up again more clearly and submit it again to the body for a vote. And unless he hears something different when he connects with the DRA attorney, so far, that's, uh, Derek's advice to the town.
Other than that, Mrs. Lincoln, Mark, anything to add to it?
No.
Anybody from the audience? All right, we'll continue to work, sir?
Should be determined.
We'll continue to work this and we'll keep you posted as we fight our way through the legal rigmarole that this has turned into. All right, next item on the agenda, traffic safety group follow-up.
All right. I'll, um, do a quick introduction and then we can kind of go back and forth on topics and I encourage Chief Buxton to jump in at any point topics that are exciting to you and you'd like to speak on. Um, just to give a little bit of history for anyone who's not really aware, there was a public meeting held on July twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-five. This was triggered by a group of resident neighbors, the downtown area, that had shared concerns with the Newfields Police Department. Um, on July twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-five, those folks joined additional folks, uh, as well as the New Hampshire DOT. The Chief Young brought them to the table. And, um, the Rockingham Planning Commission representative was unable to attend that meeting. So that meeting was pretty detailed and exhaustive. Um, everyone who showed up had an opportunity to share their concerns. Uh, there are worries for traffic safety, pedestrian safety, um, how the signage is or isn't potentially helpful, how the crosswalks are working. And, um, many people were able to share, uh, reservations and concerns as well as, um, the impact of any potential changes. And so if changes were going to be made, would that have a negative rippling effect, um, in the neighborhoods, on the streets, or in some way that we might be able to find out? So ideas were kicked around and questions were asked. We were tasked with finding answers to some of those questions so that we could come back together and have a more rich discussion. And, um, although some updates and a variety of select board meetings on the process were given over time, uh, we were able to have Scott Vogel from the Rockingham Planning Commission join us on September third. And that was Chief Young, Chief Buxton, and Lieutenant Blaze and myself. Basically, we shared all the questions that townsfolk had shared. We shared the YouTube video from the meeting and the transcript. So he was able to come to that meeting with a pretty clear understanding of folks' concerns. Um, during this meeting, our purpose was simply for information gathering, finding out if there were resources available to us as a town. Um, and it was not for any decision-making. It was only for resource and information gathering. And since then, um, we have some notes from the meeting that basically gather everything together. And I just want to read through the key issues part and then we can move into key topics. And, you know, Chief Young, you can jump in on the things because there was some follow-up even after that meeting. Gathered some information for us and Chief Young, um, chased down some information for us as well. So the key issues are resident concerns regarding traffic speed, pedestrian and cyclist safety on the Route eighty-five and Main Street area of Newfields Village, including the intersection with Route eighty-seven and coming from Route one oh eight, the crossing of pedestrians in and near the existing crosswalks, the library, Newfields Country Store and Town Hall areas, the school bus stops and students who are walking. Concerns also include residents crossing for their mail, attempting to pull in and out of side streets and driveways, notably the increase in volume of traffic since COVID, given the unique position of Newfields between major routes. Confounding factors include sightlines, speed limit changes to or from thirty miles an hour to forty miles an hour, signage and seasonal changes in sunlight, particularly but not limited to heavy traffic flow times of the day. Special mention was made in July about the safety of children, elders, slow-moving people, new and young drivers navigating traffic. Notably, residents in outlying areas and outside of downtown neighborhoods voiced that they also have traffic safety concerns. And lastly, many involved in the July meeting voiced that any remedies to identify concerns not cause rippling worsening effects for the town, homes or business owners. So to be really thoughtful about potential changes and the impacts they might have. And, um, so we did talk about a variety of topics in order to find out if there's data to support how effective particular things are and if our town is eligible for any resources such as engineering studies, um, things that would give us money to help us, uh, come up with recommendations or actually make changes. I will say we haven't had a significant enough loss or event to qualify for funding. So we don't want to ever have that, but it's a ten-year period, uh, with serious bodily injury or death. And fortunately for Newfields, we have not had that. But that is where the funding issue was. So the regional, um, the Rockingham Planning Commission was able to say that the funding is really wrapped up um, tied to communities who are having significant, uh, impacts from their traffic problems. And, um, Chief Young, you could jump in as well on things that you feel like maybe have changed over time since then, things that you're seeing changes in or, um, things the department is also doing.
Yeah, obviously in fourth, education and, uh, public knowledge, obviously, um, we have grant money to conduct some local enforcement. Um, over seventy-five percent of the people we start out here are town residents, in fact, some even live out here. There are people who live on the street, either themselves or their children. So, um, and we knew that, that was discussed, that has changed. People were speeding, yes, there are some out of town, but, uh, your neighbors are speeding. Uh, you know, that being said, we continue the enforcement, obviously, uh, the crosswalk, um, issue out here in Main Street, you have the same problem on, on, uh, SCASIC that we're working with the school board, uh, regarding that. Uh, sun's an issue in the morning, um, on eighty-seven, uh, coming into the school. Sun is an issue in the afternoon, uh, heading toward exit, coming up to the crosswalk in the general store where our students cross, uh, by the tracks on Swans, uh, Swans West Street. So, you know, that being said, we did apply for another grant through New Hampshire Highway Safety to help with uh, enforcement, but not only speeding, uh, the next fiscal year, it starts October one to September thirtieth. Um, but the state also gave us some money for pedestrian, uh, enforcement and education at the crosswalks, uh, and bicycle. The e-bikes obviously has been an issue this past summer as well.
And you've, um, got the new radar?
Yeah, handheld radar came in this summer, like August stuff, which gives us a little bit more flexibility. Uh, where, you know, obviously there's not much shoulders on eighty-seven or eighty-five. Uh, it allows us to park in a business or a private residence if they allow us to, uh, park. Uh, we do have some residents that do not allow us to park in the driveway. Um, and so we have to be strategic of how we conduct our enforcement.
Some of the things that were talked about included rumble strips or speed bumps and things that are like functional impediments or reminders to motorists. And, um, Scott Vogel talked a little bit about, uh, rumble strips in communities where people found them to be very noisy and they ended up removing them. Um, and there wasn't, I don't think, a lot of data to support that they actually slowed people down. They might get someone's attention, but they don't necessarily cause motorists to go slower. And they also might increase some hazards. I don't know if you were, had a little bit more information about the topic of rumble strips?
Yeah, rumble strips and the, you know, obviously the traffic comment, that's what the state calls it. Um, you know, obviously there are studies out there and, uh, data to support that they're unsafe for motorcycles, bicyclists, and actually there's studies that it brings down real estate value of people's houses, uh, that are in certain areas, so.
You talked about, um, speed limits and the data supporting whether changing speed limits truly changes driver behavior. And some of the gathering of speed data is to see what speeds people are traveling most of the time. There is zero risk that speed limit would be raised because people are driving faster. That's not something that would happen to the town. Towns don't want their speed limit raised, it's not getting raised. However, there isn't, uh, support for getting dropped either. And lowering the speed limit isn't necessarily in alignment with, uh, what can happen in our downtown area. It seems like, um, the cost of an engineering study that could end up recommending that would preclude it and it's not likely to get recommended on top of that. Uh, so it seems like resource is not used wisely if that becomes an, an agenda or a goal. Not to say that it can't be, but, um, after hearing from Scott and hearing about enforcement and what happens but after hearing from Scott and hearing about enforcement and what happens even on a court level when people get tickets and they fight them, depending on the threshold for the ticket, if it's not over a certain amount over the speed limit, they're getting thrown out. And that speed limits themselves in most communities like ours require much more density to be dropped. That dropping a speed limit wouldn't necessarily change the behavior of people driving through downtown. Other options that got talked about included adding signage, which could be like speed limit signage in places where folks have noticed there is not another sign to tell people the speed limit is still 30. After you've turned a corner, it's not 40 yet. People might be speeding up anticipating that it's 40 already. And so the possibility of adding signage, signage that is voluntary, like yard signage that could be coordinated. Scott sent an email with some examples of what some other communities have used, large font, very simple, not too many words. If folks wanted to get behind a voluntary campaign for yard signage, that's something that could happen and people could choose to part of that, which is different than adding a permanent sign or a speed limit sign. Some signs do get, people get blind to them. But I don't know if you have an idea of the potential placement or more signs that might be helpful.
Speed limit signs?
Speed limit signs.
There was one that was identified. State explained why there wasn't one because basically Exeter Road, Main Street, coming off of the SCASIC, they don't have a speed limit sign there because the speed limit is the same coming off of the SCASIC. So people's perception should be the speed limit is not changing. It does change, it changes to a 40 down the hill. It's not going to correct to put one in. It's up to the state to where they want to put that.
But that's a request we could make.
That's a request that we could put in with the state.
Other data that got shared was that the blinking speed signs actually are effective and they seem to be more effective if they're not static, meaning not in a permanent location. They get moved around, they have a little more novelty. And so whether it's blinking lights at a crosswalk or light at a crosswalk or lights before areas where there are changes, speed limits or traffic patterns that are a little more complicated, these things can be really helpful. They actually are a better indicator of a likelihood of creating more safety. So that was good information to think about how and where we're able to use our signage, speed signs. And if there are any other types of signage that could be helpful. Looking at that advanced warning signs with a yellow backing, things that say school bus stop ahead. Those are things we don't have, what we might benefit from having, they might be more cost-effective or actually doable. It was, it was really a lot of information, talking about supporting school bus stop safety, encouraging vigilance, really getting people talking about calling the police right away if they see a driving infraction rather than posting on social media or telling each other about it, but to contact the police right away. And if there's any opportunity to tighten the communication with the school bus drivers, that they not let anything go. That if they're seeing someone blow past a stop sign pulled out on a school bus, that they're doing the best they can to report that, even if they don't get the plate number. Because we've heard from people that they observed this to happen, but the police didn't get a call at the time. And so there's room to build a campaign around education and getting people more actively involved to make the pedestrian safety, school bus safety happen a little tighter.
Yeah, I'm just so impressed. Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Karen.
Are you, wait, hang on, hang on. Are you done yet?
Yep.
Okay.
So basically, there is a risk of too much signage and that's something that has to be talked about if signs are added, that we're thoughtful about that. There definitely, there were grants, there were programs, there were things that had been utilized in the past and it was confirmed that those funding sources have dried up. And so certain, certain grants that could have potentially been available are no longer available. There were safe routes to school, it's been used in the past. There were definitely some transportation alternatives program, congestion mitigation, air quality, which Newfields applied for some years ago. So some of these things are, you know, funds that have either been helpful to Newfields in the past or they're just not available now. And basically, there was a recommendation by Scott to really work together with people about what they would like to see happening that's both cost-effective and doable. We talked about whether or not parking cruisers is helpful, even if no one's in them. There was Chief Do. There was a potential resource and a concealed radar monitoring device, looks like a cable box on a pole, which is another way that would help the police potentially be able to monitor speeds in areas that are harder to regularly observe. That's something we don't have. It's certainly important to consider if purchases are going to be made. These are budget issues. They come in or out of budget and then these items have to be maintained. If it's something that the police department is getting or applying for grants for, they would have to also be maintained. There are more families in Newfields, 22 kindergarten students this year and more students walking to school this year as compared to last year, which is about, I think, I was at U Chief, it said 30 to 40% increase in walkers to school. And there are more homes being built that would entice families. So overall, school enrollment is down since the early 2000s, but it's bumping up a little bit in our elementary ages and that doesn't really account for sixth grade and up. That's just looking at the elementary school walkers. So there is data to support that working to get our school bus stops and our walkers safe, it's definitely worth doing because that problem's only going to get worse. Anything? There was a lot of information, but a lot of it was things that people already had been talking about. Adding crosswalks, I think we talked about that topic for a while and there are bump out requirements. There, it's not, if people are congealed on the side next to a crosswalk and you're a motorist, you don't know if they're really going to cross in front of you or not. You know, maybe you're riding your brake and maybe you're looking each way. And that, so if, if crosswalks are better lit and have the appropriate bump out on either side, then maybe there's a way to improve our current crosswalk. Moving crosswalks seem to have too many options. So we're sort of brainstorming about that. And so did you, did you ever thought about our current crosswalk or what might make that a little bit more?
Obviously, the state is limited in what we can do. That's clarified within, and I think when Freeman talked about one of the meetings where this was brought up several years ago and the state wanted to take that away. Obviously, I don't want to take that away. It's not the best location, but it's really only one that matters. You know, with the school board now pertaining to some safety issues at crosswalk at the school, state recommends the rapid beacon federal signs that you see in downtown New Market or by Phillips Exeter Academy in Exeter. They're expensive. It's some requirements that you need. And crosswalk is ADA compliant with the one in the schools ADA compliant. So to put one of those out here on Main Street would be a little bit easier.
Now the adding the rapid.
That would help you. That would all be up to the select board. Having input for people who live out on Main Street, do they want these blinking lights? Ramps aren't on all the time. This has come up in the past, it's up in here where there was pushback pertaining to these types of signs on Main Street where people don't pay attention. I think the state says this makes the crosswalk safer. And you need to get one to want that out there.
To be looking at that, they're utilizing that. So anything more from the topic or from the meeting that you think is? Anything from either of the top?
Oh, that's, that's a tricky, that's a tricky call on putting flashing lights by someone's resident. You know, whether it's by the school or by the Newfields store. But perhaps we can for sure highlight those crosswalks somehow in another way. Making them well lit.
Or find out if that's what people would, would want. I mean, you know, truly, it's a, it's a town collective problem and a town collective decision-making process. It's anyone else coming along and waving a magic fairy wand and saying it's going to be like this. You know, so it really is going to be important to figure out which ideas folks want to get behind and what are the resources necessary to see those things happen. And that includes the cost of purchasing things and then maintaining them and where it fits in the budget, planning ahead for that. But it did seem like that most of the ideas around rumble strips and changing speed limit, it seemed like coming out of those meetings, it seemed like not particularly practical ideas for a variety of reasons. So I, I felt like that and telling people that the speed limit is never going to get raised, even if an engineering study says everyone goes faster on this road, the speed limit's not going to go up. And that we're not eligible for any funding for any particular studies. That's zero. Not even a cost share possibility. So those were some bigger topics.
And I did go to the State Department of Transportation 10-year plan meeting up Blue School or with the Greenland Central School. Newfields is not on any 10-year plan, even the 108 bridge that was supposed to be replaced, you know, probably a decade ago, that's not even on the 10-year plan. Even some more serious issues with 87 and Heading Road and Epping, where the fatality accidents, that's been taken off. So right now we have nothing on the 10-year plan in the state's eyes. Granted, they review it every few years. So if we have a problem, we get a serious accident, you know, hopefully not, then, you know, things can be brought back on.
Now, you reached out to a couple of different police departments to ask their impressions about their, particularly their speed readout signs or some other thing.
Yeah, Exeter has a permanent one that they had a fatality involving bicyclists years ago. The chief, you know, it hasn't been up long enough for him to see if it's deterrent. I talked to another chief. He doesn't recommend keeping a sign on because the border republicans just get used to it and it's just going to go right over their head. It's going to be more of a permanent sign and he recommends moving around, which we do. It's a little challenging this time of year with the sun and the skies a little bit lower, get less daylight. Those run on solar. We have to pull the one up Exeter Road because it was not working until probably 10, 11 o'clock in the morning. So we deal with that, obviously, at certain times of the year. Summertime, May through September, October, it's usually not an issue.
In that case, we'll open it up to the audience. Please.
So first of all, I'm Gina Thomaset. I'm sorry, I live on 58 Main Street.
Could you speak up just a little bit, please, ma'am?
You know, surprisingly, because if it was, if it were my kid, I'd be screaming, but you know, just now I'm being a little bit more reserved. But anyway, first of all, I want to thank Chief, thank you for all the stuff that you've done to move this forward and Kat, also thank you for meeting with folks. One of the things that I always focus on is around the education piece that, that really Chief brought up to our attention is a great way of, of making awareness. So one of the things that I was thinking, and I don't know if this is a possibility, that maybe we could send out a letter on the town email, just alerting people that, hey, this is being looked at because I don't think a lot of people are really aware. To be fair to our, our neighbors is one way. The other thing I was thinking of, and mainly because I live on Main Street, I'm always seeing the flashing signs. But, you know, just putting on the sign like, you know, speed limit, Newfields, 30 miles an hour strictly enforced. And not all the time, but just to let people know that it's being examined and making them aware. Because the other night, it was, thank God it wasn't Halloween night, but it was on Saturday. I was out late. A truck had to be going like 60 miles an hour. And it's at night. So to be fair, thank God, nobody is out and about, but people are definitely speeding in the evenings. And of course, it's always about the kids and I'm really thrilled and I get to see them every morning, walk to school. I think it's fabulous about this town is that we have this community where kids are laughing and looking forward to their school day. So it just shows you that, that our walkways are being used more. It brings the community together. So it's, I'm a big proponent of, you know, a little bit of a walkway, you say hello to your neighbor or whatever. So it's good to know that we're examining it. We have great partners in helping us with examining that. And I think that collaboratively, we could really do that. But my real, my point was around the education piece, that maybe we could send out a memo or something to folks or highlighted during, I think August is driver safety month or something like that. We're just bringing it up to people's attention. If people understood that the speed limit was going to be examined and I agree that signage gets, I mean, we all do. We don't even see the signs anymore. But if we really highlight that we're really looking at our speed limit, that maybe that would be an opportunity to educate. And I really think that everybody in our community is very much wants to help each other. So I just think that maybe that might be a suggestion if, if you want to discuss it further. So thank you again, Chief. Thank you, Kat. Appreciate all you're doing.
Thank you, ma'am. Anybody else?
Hi, Dave Losinger, 92 Exeter Road. Just a couple of thoughts. Number one, 87 is a 35 mile an hour speed limit because it's a rural residential road. This is a rural residential road. Wondering if we ever talk to the state about changing it to 35 instead of 40, especially if people are speeding and there's a 10 or 12 mile speed limit where people get thrown out anyway. People going 50 miles an hour now on this road, which I think is dangerous speed, wouldn't get a ticket or the ticket would be thrown out. It is a rural residential road and 265.60, I think, says rural residential road should be 35 miles an hour. So that could be something. Doesn't cost a whole lot to put a 35 mile an hour sign instead of a 40 mile an hour sign. Something to think about. The other thing, and it's just, just to suggest, just a thought. I completely agree that putting stop signs on 87 would be a disaster. Having said that, we have an issue with the crosswalks over here. What if we put stop signs at Swampscott? And there's very few people come up Swampscott to go on to 85. So you're not going to have a three-way stop where everybody doesn't know where they're going. You're basically having people coming from 101 and from 108. They come up to a stop sign, stop, and then they proceed. It might say, it might be beneficial for the, definitely be beneficial for the crosswalk and the kids and slow people down in town. Just two thoughts that I want to consider. Thank you very much and I appreciate everything you folks are doing. Thanks.
Now, that topic came up, right, about stop signs in terms of the rippling stopped traffic? Backwards out of, out of a sight.
Yeah, there's a section where we talked about maybe stop signs which cause more accidents. He identified one particular town, either it was Chester or Hampstead, that put a four-way stop sign in and just taking them out. They, they don't like making changes and then have to make changes right afterwards because they, this doesn't work. But that was brought up, especially with the traffic volume back on causing more accidents, people accelerating, revving their engines, dump trucks, tractor trailers using the J brakes. But if that's something that people want to explore, that's, I, I think it's going to cause more issues than we currently have.
Anything else on that issue?
Anyone else like to comment?
In that case, I'm going to use that to segue into some information that I gained today. I went to the school, elementary school, school board meeting. One of the issues that we have been having, and it's been very noticeable for the past couple of weeks with the sun lower, the time changing. Police, police officers in town have been hit, almost hit four to five times by people driving towards 87 or towards 85 on 87 into the school zone with the sun as low as it is in the morning time that school starts. Number of them have stopped and spoken to the officer on duty saying, I could not see you. Number of them have stopped and spoken to the officer on duty saying, I could not see you. And these, most of the folks who've stopped and have been engaged with this or had this happen to them are people who drive that road every day. They're fully cognizant of the school zone. They're fully cognizant of the speed, and they're slowing down, but they're still blinded. One of the things, just as a note of aside, it was mentioned to me that that 20 mile an hour flashing light that is on the west side of the school is intermittent at times. And I have learned after asking some questions that that sign is the responsibility of the SAU. It's not the responsibility of the town. So for those who think that we haven't been doing our due diligence, police department has noted the failure of this light. They've notified the SAU numerous times, but the SAU has failed to resolve the problem. That is not a town responsibility. Furthermore, moving along on this because of the fact that we've had so many close calls, and these are officers working out there with vests or full raincoats, doing their duty, and it's become rather hazardous. Think of the issue now, you've got a full grown adult out there who's a police officer. You get a little fellow or a little girl that's, what, four feet and change, walking across there. It'd be really easy for them to get hit. And the, and the problem is, how do we slow them down by that section to be cognizant of the fact that the sun is going to blind them, and it's still a problem? One of the solutions that was, when I spoke to, one of the solutions when I was talking to the chief and Lieutenant Blaze about it, was to take those crossing signs, make them illuminated with a button controlling, and that would just be another step in solving the problem. In the interim, they have taken out one of those, one of the school crossing, or road crossing signs like we used to have here on Main Street, that the plow guys hated with a passion because they had to pull them every time before they could plow, and putting those a little further down, a little west of the school, right there. So it's another distraction in the sense of something you're picking up visually as you're approaching the school. We've also talked about putting one of the large electronic signboards in the grassy area before the school in front of that oak tree, just to get more cognizance and more recognition of the problem. Lieutenant Blaze did the work on it, and he found out that those signs could be illuminated with the light and a push-button control on a post that is movable, should that be necessary in the future, for approximately $7,000 plus labor. The problem is, the firehouse side of that crossing is not ADA compliant, and it would require the pebble mat or whatever the terminology is for it, to make it ADA compliant. So there'd be a little bit of work with the DOT on that. The issue is that this is a problem that needs immediate attention, in my view, and I think most people would concur with that. $7,000 in labor installation cost. Currently, there is a public safety committee that is addressing by the, by the school board, not the Taj Mahal parking lot that we've dealt with for the past two years, but particularly addressing the safety issues of the stepping and crossing, which Chief, myself, and Chief Buxton, we identified three and a half, four years ago. For them to fix it, one, either their Plan A or their Plan B of their solution will have to be passed in March. Then it will take until summer, which time before the work can be done, to rectify the issue with the crosswalk. Well, school is out, and that leaves us with approximately eight months with the threat that we're now facing. Now, the sun angle is going to change, and everything, you know, there are going to be changes. But if this can be done in a more timely manner, it's more better. Just coincidentally, the school board has approximately $7,000 to $8,000 of unaccounted for, unexpended funds that they need to spend no later than 10 December of this year. So it all dovetails very nicely to resolving this issue. So the question is, I left it, they had done some research on it, and they were told that it was going to be $35,000 to solve this problem. And I think we can get it done for their $7,000 to $8,000 plus labor to install. There will have to be some more coordination with DOT on this, make it all 100% compatible. There's going to be, have to be more liaison between all the departments that are involved, Fire Department, the Police Department, and the road agent, to make sure, even though it's a state road, there'll still be some aspect and issue of it. And there'll have to be coordination with the, the school board to make sure it happens. I think this is a critical issue, and I think it deserves the diligence and the support and the research to move forward on this, to preclude a little fellow or a little girl from getting hit. Or one of our police officers, because then we're paying, it's cop, you know. I just wanted to give you folks a heads up on this, that that's an issue that we're trying to resolve, and it's going to take some, some finagling to get, get through all the wickets to try, try and solve it. Any comments on that, Kat?
I, I think it's good information, and as well, if something happens to make that crossing safer, and it's an example of what it might look like if boats downtown get behind an idea of wanting a beacon, some type of lighted beacon for the crosswalk downtown. People can see something and actually say, this is what it would be like, potentially in front of my own house or down the street. So if this pool and the kids crossing has a nest egg of funds to be able to make something like this happen a lot sooner, it also gives us more information for how we might decide about whether that's a doable idea for our downtown area. You can learn from it.
One, one of the things in a situation like this is you need to break the chain of causation. So there's, it segues on any accident, any mishap, where you'll have one event or two event. But when the holes in the Swiss cheese all line up, that's when the event happens. We also have Plan A and Plan B from the School Board Emergency Committee. But do we have a Plan C? If, if they do not pass, and I think the number that they referenced tonight, correct me if I'm wrong, Jim, was 500,000 or less is what they expected it to be. Was that a rough number? Do you remember? Yeah, so they're going to be asking possibly, and this is very premature, but the number they referenced was less than, a little bit less than 500 is what they, 500,000 additional dollars for a warrant article. If that does not pass, then we're standing around looking at each other going, what is our Plan C? So you mitigate the chain of causation, and you always have an alternative plan to solve the problem if those don't resolve. And I think this would, would do that. Mark?
It's a good, it's a good starter to, you know, talking about traffic management. It might open things up to, to do kind of a study to see, okay, how are people slowing down now with these, with a crosswalk like that? I was driven right into the sunlight and, and, you know, I'm going 20 miles an hour, and then I see you. So I, I could see how that could be dangerous. People are distracted, they're on their phones. So if we can get this funded from elsewhere, from the SAU funds, fantastic.
Anything from the audience?
And that's, that's a res, it's not really a residential area where it's going to be flashing on someone's home. It's going to be right in front of.
So it's a push button where you push it on, the light stays on for what, 40 seconds?
I'm sure it's a timer.
When they could cross, right?
Yeah, it is, it is in a constant. So I just wanted to inform, make that knowledgeable throughout the town, throughout the meeting, and pass it on, or do it however you would like with it. In that case, we'll continue to move on. Prior meeting. Yes, sir.
Again, it's on Redberg. Just hearing what Kat has to say and yourself. I mean, there's some items are lower hanging fruit that probably are affordable, can be done, and then some probably are cross prohibitive. School indefinitely has, so if there's any disagreement on that. So we just had a committee formed for the audit findings on facility. It seems like this.
For the what?
We had a special committee formed, you know, for the audit findings on the safety, you know, of the facilities. Seems like a ripe situation to do something similar. Maybe tighten this together, maybe not, but, you know, it, it seems pretty urgent.
Sounds like you're saying, because we have an endorsement of an education campaign, is maybe there's a core group of people that would like to get together and brainstorm strategies and make recommendations about education, about some of these low cost or low hanging fruit topics that we could potentially have more movement.
I, I agree, and I think there's, there's probably a three-month ultimatum on some of these things getting done. But there also could be kind of a five-year lookout when there's 18 stoplights on 108, and everybody's trying to go through Newfield's like a, like a train, and, and we're facing that in three or four or five years. I mean, so we should look out a little bit as well for what might happen. And I think you have no trouble finding people interested to, to be part of it. So, thank you.
The other point I do want to mention on that is the school board will be having a safety committee meeting on the 10th at the school at 19, 7:00 PM. All ready, we'll move on to the next item. Prior meeting minutes. Everybody have a chance to look those? Are you good?
I did. I sent my two little edits to you earlier.
I'm good with it.
Okay, in that case, I'll make a motion to accept the October 21st, 2025 meeting minutes.
Second.
Favor?
Aye.
Checks. Oh, I do have another item here. We do have a deed for a cemetery plot, and there's some folks in town that want to buy a plot. And that'll be in the Piscatic Cemetery, and it's from a trust, and there's the signs, and all the documents are here. Do you guys have a copy of this? You've seen this?
Mm-hmm.
You do have a copy of it?
Okay.
Okay. Any issues on this? Any discussions?
No.
No. Okay, then I'll make a motion to accept it. All in favor?
Aye.
I give a quick ex officio update on the planning board meeting.
I stand with that, your head.
I did, but I wanted to let folks know who weren't around already that there's going to be the first public hearing on the topic of language change based on the ADU and parking that's in our zoning presently. There's like a gap between the new state legislation and how our wording exists already. And so the planning board is going to host the first public hearing on the topic of changing language, and that is next Thursday. So if folks are paying attention to the ADU changes and the zoning language changes that are anticipated, that's the first opportunity to talk about it.
7:00 PM.
7:00 PM, Thursday, right here.
Right, keep it, please, sir. All right. A couple of other minor issues. Badger Park, the stumps that were there from the trees that were taken down have been removed, so that's all leveled and flat. And I think there'll be some, the formation aspect is in progress for the Veterans Association. And I think you'll see some flowers put out there for Veterans Day around each of the stones. See, room crews and that. That is it for the agenda. Does anybody have anything from the audience? Just your speaker.
Good evening. I'm Mark Steyer. I live on East Drive. I have, I guess, three questions really about the recycling process in the town. And one of them, I believe, I asked probably here a couple of months ago, and I'd just like to repeat it to make sure I have it right. Recycling is or is not mandatory in our town?
Is not mandatory.
It's not. That's, that was my understanding then, and it is still is now. Thank you. Second of three points. My understanding is that the cost for collecting recyclables is about twice per ton.